All right. Good evening, everyone. My— hi. My name is Ian Goodnow. I'm the Chair of your Brattleboro Select Board. And up with me is the rest of the 2023-24 Select Board and our Town Manager, John Potter. I'm going to officially start the 2024 Representative Town Meeting informational session. Can everybody hear me okay?
Hearing that.
Yeah? What's that?
Hearing that.
Hearing that? Great, okay. So, I want to make a couple announcements before we get going. First, the Unified School District Annual Meeting is going to be next Tuesday at 6:00 PM at the high school. At 7:00 PM. All right. So, good start. And then, because of that, the next Brattleboro Select Board meeting is going to be on the 21st, Thursday, the 21st, at 6:15, our normal start time. And we're doing that just so we don't have a conflict with the school district's annual meeting. I see someone standing in the back there. Is there a question? Oh, no. Okay, great.
They just want to stand.
What's that? They just want to stand? Great. You can just—you can stand, it's okay. Okay. So, announcements out of the way. What is the informational meeting for? So, this isn't RTM. This isn't really a Select Board meeting. This is an opportunity for us all to go through each of the articles that has—that have been warmed for Representative Town Meeting on the 23rd. It's an opportunity for us to give you information that's been provided, but to kind of talk it through some. It's also an opportunity for you all to ask us questions about anything on any of the articles. We will try our best to answer them today, but we—as in my experience, you all have great questions that sometimes we can't answer right now. And in that case, we will get you an answer and we're gonna—we will send it out to you all by email prior to the 23rd, so you have that information. That's sometimes helpful if something that you ask is data-driven, so that we can send that data out to you as well. And so, let's talk a little bit of procedure, which is something—if you've ever seen a Select Board meeting, you know I'm a big fan of. If you want to talk, raise your hand, and then— Jessica. Where—I'm—there she is. Jessica is our mic person this evening. She will see your hand raised, and she will hustle over to you and hand you the mic, and then you can start speaking. If you wait—if you don't wait and you start talking, I'm just gonna interrupt you and tell you to wait, because BCTV can't pick you up. So, people who are watching at home—or, more importantly, generations in the future who want to watch this informational session—won't hear your important question, which we would hate to deny them. So, it gets a little tricky when we have multiple people with their hands up, so you'll just have to be patient with me as I try to make sure the person whose hand goes up first is the person who gets to talk next. So, and finally—and this is the one that I think is most important. This is not the meeting to get into substantive debate on any of the articles. So, questions are fine, and, you know, clarifications are good, but if you are gonna start advocating for a particular article or trying to argue a point, I'm going to politely interrupt you and tell you to wait and have that very important point be made at Representative Town Meeting. And that's twofold. One, it's not the purpose of this meeting tonight. And two, not all of RTM is here. So, your great point that you're making now isn't gonna matter until the whole RTM hears it. So, I'd ask you to respect that, and please just keep your—keep your question—your comments to questions or clarifications as we go through the articles. So, with that, are there any questions? All right, I don't see any. Great. So, we're gonna go—so, I'm going to be operating the entire evening out of this book here, the—the big budget book, the Town Report—the Annual Report. And I—because I like to just make sure everyone knows where we're at. I am gonna be starting on page 14, which is just the list of articles that RTM will be considering. And I'll just point out that, once we get past the, like, first six articles—which are pretty standard—we'll still go through them tonight—once we get past those first six, from seven forward, starting on page 17, there's a more sort of thorough explanation of of those. So, if you leave tonight and you feel like you—you didn't want to ask the question, but like, maybe you still had a question about one of these, you can always start there. There is some information about each article after six there. Okay. So, with that, we're gonna—and so, I'm just gonna—I'm gonna read the article, except for the really long ones, because I'm gonna spare you all that. And I'll read the article, probably talk a little bit about it for a second, and then I'm gonna look to you all, and if you have any questions, then we'll—we'll hear. So, starting with—oh, actually, one other thing I wanted to touch—touch on first. Before we get through the articles, you'll notice that there are two here—there are two articles that are usually on every Representative Town Meeting, kind of since I've been aware of RTM, which are the Financial Support for the Southeast Vermont Economic Development— I don't know what that last S stands for. SEVEDs. That's an article that usually has been on the warning. That and the article for the Community Marketing Initiative for the DBA, those two articles are not on this warning, because in the discussion around the budget this year for the Select Board, we made a determination that, one—the SEVEDs, one was already coming out of the revolving loan fund, and the Community Marketing Initiative for the DBA, while it's—it's looking different now, what they were asking for made sense to come out of the revolving loan fund as well. And those—we decided it didn't really need to go before RTM. So, that's why you're not seeing either of those articles on the warning. And I'm happy to take questions or discuss that further, but I just wanted to clarify that at the beginning. So, with that, we'll start with Article One, which is, "To see if the town will ratify, approve, and confirm the Select Board's appointment of a town clerk for the term of one year." So, on January 30th of 2024, the Brattleboro Select Board appointed a town clerk, a town treasurer, and essentially executed a contract—a retainer—with a town attorney. The Article One, Two, and Three are ratifying that decision made by the Select Board. The town clerk is Hillary Francis. She's sitting right at that table there. Big round of applause. Because there's nothing else really to do about this article but praise Hillary. She is amazing. She just completed a really successful election on Town Meeting Day. It's an immense amount of work, setting up, preparing, and then, you know, closing it down, and then doing recounts and things like that. So, yes, I was proud to approve her as town clerk, and I hope that RTM will ratify it. So, any questions on that first article? Seeing none. The Article Two is "To see if the town will ratify and approve—ratify, approve, and confirm the Select Board's appointment of town treasurer for a term of one year." I'll look to see if we have any questions there. No. And Article Three, "To see if the town will ratify, approve, and confirm the Select Board's appointment of the town attorney for a term of one year." And that's—Attorney Fisher isn't here this evening, but is—that—it's his—I think it's his firm that we actually execute the contract with.
Kim Frost is the attorney.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kim. And Kim Frost is our town treasurer. So, I apologize for not acknowledging that as well. Spoon?
Spoon Agave.
Ah, so, you didn't listen to the instructions. Kim, or Jessica, coming over with the mic.
Spoon Agave, District Eight. This would be unprecedented, of course, but it's something that should have—in—in all the years I've been around—it's a lot now—there's never been any—any administrative evaluation of the town attorney position and services. And, you know, speaking about it, what you hear from most people is, "Well, there's just nobody else around who knows as much about the state law and the charters and anything than the attorney that we have now." And is that the reason that the town keeps rehiring him, simply because there's nobody else around? And—which—I mean, he may well be the best person around, but may not be. I don't know. I'm not anywhere near intimately enough connected to what goes on in the town and the legal spheres and all of that to have any idea or any way to assess the quality of the work we get, but we should get some assessment.
Great. Thank you, Spoon. I'm excited for this informational session, and we got questions on Article Three. So, I'll just speak for myself as one Select Board member. I think the answer to your question is no. So, we don't execute a contract with Fisher &amp; Fisher, because Bob Fisher is the only attorney in Vermont who knows municipal law. There are lots of attorneys and attorney's offices—even in Wyndham County—who have municipal experience, and in fact, are town attorneys for other towns, you know, Slayson in Bellas Falls—I mean, I could probably list quite a few attorneys who do that type of work. I think the reason that we keep executing contracts with Fisher's office is because Bob Fisher does exceptional work. He is real—I have had the personal experience of working with him on a—on a number of issues as both just a member of the Board and also as Chair, and I just—I just think that he does incredibly good work for the town. He cares about the town. It's more than—I—I—my experience is that it's more than just a business relationship. He—he cares deeply about the work that he does, and he gives a lot of time to the town. And I think if you were to really calculate the number of dollars he makes per hour based on the retainer agreement that we—that we execute with him, which is just a flat fee, it would probably be pretty amazing how little he's making. So, that's my personal experience. I'm happy to open up. Liz?
It's my experience being on the Select Board—
Five years, and Chair and Vice Chair for a year each, that Bob Fisher does tremendous amount of work, giving us advice on on any municipal topic that comes before him. And not only does he help us with whatever problems might arise, whatever lawsuits, but in his advice, he saves us a tremendous amount of trouble and and therefore taxpayer dollars. So, I think his his counsel and his wisdom is really a tremendous gift to our town.
Great. Thanks, Liz. Any other Board member? Great. And I think probably part of this article also is for us to justify why we execute a contract with him.
I think you missed my point.
You have to wait till we get a mic, and you'll—so, if you want a quick second question.
Actually, there was nothing—there was not much to do right now about the things I was saying. What I am suggesting is that, from here on out, in the Board's reports—or somewhere in there—in the Town Report, it simply have a paragraph or two with a recommendation for town attorney and a few words about why. It's—it's—it's not really appropriate, I think, to—for you to have to sit there and find reasons or whatever, because this is not a debate here whether he's the best person or not.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Spoon. Any other questions on Article Three? No. All right. So, we're gonna move on to Article Four, which is "To act on the Town Auditor's Report." So, that can be found on pages 111 to the very last page of the Town Report, which is page 177. And if you go to the very end, you'll see that there are no corrective actions needed to be taken, and that's because the report was good. So, yes.
Hi. Ronnie Byrne, District Nine. Just a really quick question. What exactly do you mean "to act on"?
Good question. So, my understanding—and I will definitely look to be corrected if I'm wrong here—but my understanding is if the—if the report had corrective actions to be taken, that would be what RTM would be approving. Is that correct?
That is.
Yeah. So, when the auditor—the auditor's report—and and I'll—and I'll—sometimes they do have corrective actions, and it doesn't necessarily mean, like, it's catastrophic. Sometimes there are, you know, reporting things that should be done better, or just simply, you know, there are ways to improve how the town is doing in its auditing—in its finances. And so, if there were corrective actions to be taken, you'd see that at the end of the report on page 117. But we're doing okay right now, so no actions necessary. Other questions? All right. So, we'll move on to Article Five, which is "To see if the town will authorize its Select Board to employ a certified public accountant or public accountants." And I don't have much to say on this one, but it's basically to, yeah, allow us to—if we do employ public accounts—which I don't believe we do currently. So, it's more of a belts and suspenders article. So, any questions there? Seeing none? Okay. So, we'll move on to Article Six, which is "To see if the town will authorize its Select Board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes, grants, and other revenues." This is another belts and suspenders article. And by that, what I mean is, it's a protective article for the Board—for the town—in case it's something that we do need. If we had Bob Fisher here, he would say, "It's just something that we—that, like, most municipalities put in their warning to make sure that the town can protect itself for the fiscal year." Yes, and I may not be able to answer this question, but we'll see. Jessica. Abby.
Abby.
Thanks. Abby Manoukian, District Eight. I'm not sure if this is the place for the question, because the articles were actually removed, but I didn't know if this was related to the revolving loan fund, so I'm just gonna throw my question in now—or a statement, actually. But I'm very disappointed that SEVEDs and DBA have both been taken out. It feels like another way of diminishing—or even just, like, removing—local control from two articles that historically have had really vibrant debate. And even if they have ultimately passed, sometimes those debates have lasted more than an hour each, and so, I can't help but wonder if it was just a way to quell public interaction and pretty legitimate questions on how the town is spending its money. And already, I think there's a lot of concern that we're here to just rubber-stamp stuff, and when you remove articles that really have reason for local engagement, it's really discouraging.
I'm going to—I appreciate the comment, Abby. I think—I'm not gonna—let's not have a whole debate about that right now, because it's not really related to this article. Trying to think of where we can talk about that.
Is there a mailbox or room?
Yeah. That's—yeah. So, maybe we can talk about it in Article 20, when we have other—other business to discuss. Okay? Okay. Article Seven is "To see if the town will authorize the following capital improvement: to construct the secondary Pleasant Valley water storage tank in estimated cost of $1,620,000, and will authorize the issuance of notes and/or bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to—" What's that? Yeah, sorry, I was—I'm just reading from this. I'm not quite on the mic. "To aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,620,000 at a rate of interest not to exceed 3% per annum, and for a term of 10 years to pay to that extent the cost of said public improvement. The vote on this article shall be Australian ballots as required by law. The question to be voted upon is as follows," and you can read the—what the actual ballot will be. And I want to explain this now for those who are gonna be new to RTM this year. So, the poll—this is not gonna be an article that Mr. Gardenstein's gonna read out. It's going to be a ballot that will be available to you when you go to RTM on Saturday, the 23rd, and the polls will open at 10:00 AM, and they will close 30 minutes after the close of RTM, and we don't know what time that will be. And so, you'll basically mark this. And last year, it was in the back of the room, kind of near the entrance, and I'm looking at Hillary—if that's the same—that's the same this year. So—
I see a board of the House.
Ah.
Just a few, if anybody wants to.
I'll just say it again. There are sample ballots at the back of the room, at the table there, if you want to see what the ballot could look like. And, yeah, and it just takes a couple minutes, and you can just do it during, like, the lunch break time, too, if you don't want to miss discussion. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant Town Manager—oh, I got a question. If it's about the article itself, I'm gonna let the presentation happen first.
It's about the process.
Process, great. And Jessica's on the other side of the rooms. We'll give a second. Thank you.
It's on? Okay. Paul Meltin, District Seven. My recollection is that we debate the bonds on the floor before voting opens.
Oh, maybe I screwed that up. I might have screwed that up. Dave is here somewhere? No?
She's here.
We do debate it at some point in it. It's working.
David Gardenstein. I'm just gonna say that I haven't reviewed the rules to remember whether we talk about the bond article before we vote on it, but I'll know on Saturday when we get there.
Okay. So, Paul, thank you for that clarification. So, I think, more importantly, the way that you actually vote on this article is going to be by Australian ballot. And I see one other question. I see, Oscar.
Oscar Heller, District Nine. This is a general question. I'm probably just missing something. Are we not getting the texts of the motions anywhere, or am I just missing a document or something like that?
So, you mean the motion—the motions that are actually made, and Hillary—
Hillary has it?
—is over at the table? Are you—
Great.
Do you need to turn it off?
No, we need the mic.
Maybe we need two mics.
Yes, I agree.
I'd be happy to run over the rest.
So, we have an agenda that we're working on creating that will have all the motions, and those will be printed out at RTM on the table.
Would it be possible, Hillary, for that to be emailed to RTM prior to as well?
Probably as long as it's ready in time.
Okay. I'm gonna push that we try to get it emailed out to RTM beforehand.
If they were to put in your [inaudible].
I don't know if those are the final language. Yeah. Okay. Okay. So, any other questions on process? And then, I'm gonna turn it over to Assistant Town Manager Patrick Moreland for a presentation on Article Seven.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? All right. Excellent. So, Article Seven is a bond article for a project needed within the town's water and sewer utility. As Ian pointed out, state law requires that bond articles are voted on by Australian ballot. And while not every resident in Brattleboro is served by the Water and Sewer Utility, state law also requires that municipalities pledge their full faith in credit when borrowing in the form of a bond, which is why articles—even for the Water and Sewer Utility—come to Representative Town Meeting. Even so, those that live outside of the water district can rest assured that only the utility ratepayers and not the general town property taxpayers will be responsible for the repayment of the debt. The project for which we are seeking the bond is called the Secondary Pleasant Valley Water Storage Tank Project. As you may know, there is a 3 million gallon water storage tank located up at the Pleasant Valley Reservoir next to the water treatment facility. The way it sort of works is that water is withdrawn from the reservoir, it is filtered and cleaned, and then it is pumped into the storage tank. But it doesn't just sit there in the storage tank. That volume of water, that 3 million gallons, is what provides the water capacity at times of high demand. So, when everybody gets up in the morning and takes a shower, demand spikes. When there's a fire at the Brooks house and the fire department is opening up all the water lines, demand spikes. And so, that's the purpose of this large water tank, and it's really in use round the clock. So, it's—it's an essential component of our—of our water system. And and that particular length of—the particular—the portion of town served by this is actually quite extensive. It's all of West Brattleboro, and it goes all the way to—to the downtown, so it's—it's pretty essential. This tank is routinely inspected, both externally and internally, on a regular basis, and it—it gets infected internally through scuba divers, incidentally. And on a recent inspection, it was identified that there were some internal maintenance issues that needed to be addressed and addressed relatively quickly. In order to make these repairs, the tank must be drained and taken offline. Typically, this is an opportunity for a temporary water storage tank, but because of the specific space needs of a temporary water storage tank and how they relate to the site conditions at Pleasant Valley, they're not a very good match and will require a great amount of site preparation—costly site preparation—in order to make use of a temporary water tank. Our investigation further identified that it would actually be more cost-effective to install a secondary permanent water tank than to pursue a temporary water tank. And so, for this reason, the secondary water storage tank project involves the installation of a new 400,000-gallon water tank adjacent to the existing 3 million gallon tank. The cost of this project is about $1.62 million. And I think it's important to recognize that the timing of this project really couldn't be better. The state of Vermont continues to direct federal dollars into facilitating municipal water and sewer infrastructure projects. They're making it very attractive. By financing this improvement through the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, which is administered by the Vermont Bond Bank, we receive very favorable terms, including 0% interest and 50% state subsidy. So, utility ratepayers will only need to repay $810,000 of the $1.62 million borrowed, and the town can have up to 40 years to repay that amount without incurring any interest costs. That's Article Seven.
Great. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you very much. Patrick? Any questions on Article Seven? Yeah, we got two questions.
Tom Mosikowski, District Eight.
Tom, why don't you stand up for us?
Got all this stuff on my lap. In the description on page 17—well, in there. So, but in the description, it says, "We can pay the loan off early without penalty." Why would we want to? Why not wait until the very last year with infla—like, why is that even mentioned in there as an option?
Interest? I mean, that would be amazing. Liz?
Because a lot of loans, there is a penalty, and they're just pointing out that there is no penalty should we want to do that.
I hope we don't. Didn't work out.
Spoon? And I don't know—I don't know if people are, like, when they're done with the mic, like, turning it off. Just leave it on, so we don't.
Is that—is the intention to take out a 40-year loan on this? I mean, that—that seems like a long time to repay $800,000. And is that—does—does that make— And is that, does, does that make, is there any sense to? I don't know whether it is. Maybe if there's no interest, you could pay it out forever, but it would seem like the sooner that got off of the capital plan, the better.
I don't know if you want to speak to that, Patrick?
So the Select Board has considered this to the degree that they have included it in the morning and brought it before representative town meeting. We haven't had a lengthy discussion around financing options. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that what's called the offer from the bond bank was, were the terms that I described, 0% interest and up to 40 years. I think, you know, we haven't really discussed whether we should repay it in a couple of years, which we certainly could do, but as, you know, Oscar points out, you've got up to 40. So there's choices available to us and.
We got a couple of questions, and I don't know whose hand was up first. Probably Kevin was? Yeah, okay.
I just, what I remember from economics with the rate of inflation, if we wait 40 years, the $800,000 we're paying back is going to be a whole lot less painful than it is today.
Hey, now Kevin had a question, too?
Hi, Kevin O'Brien, District 9. Do we know a figure for what's, how it's going to impact folks in their pocketbook? Because it's only the folks that are going to be receiving the water are going to be paying this back, correct?
So I have a tough time hearing, but I think what I heard you say was a question related to how is this going to affect utility rate payers?
Correct.
Sure. So we've taken a look at that, and we don't foresee the need to increase rates for this reason, for the duration of the existing ordinance around utility rates, which I believe has one more year in it. This frankly just wouldn't be sufficiently costly to need to adjust rates.
Excellent, thank you. And then I guess a second one, if nobody else is jumping up. The additional tank that's being made will continue into perpetuity and just be a part of the daily operations of the plant, correct?
Yes.
Marvelous.
Who I can't see.
Hello, Linda Bailey, District 9. I'm reading here on page 17 that it says, "The loan must be accepted to receive the subsidy," and that this would allow the use of allocated capital funds to pay off the loan without an impact to user rates. $405,000 is included in the fiscal '24 capital plan, and another $405,000 is proposed in the fiscal year '25 capital plan. So that's proposing that it gets paid off in two years. From, that's what I understand that I'm reading there. Is that the proposal?
So again, the board has yet to consider the financing terms that they're seeking. So we do have available cash that has been set aside previously that would add up to the 810. But in order to receive the matching 810,000, we must go through this particular program. They won't just grant us the 810 and be done with it. We need to apply for the whole thing, and then they'll grant us 50%.
So that in order to get that subsidy, we have to apply for a loan?
Correct.
And so we're applying for the loan, and it's up to us as to when we repay it, even though this is saying we could repay it within two years?
Yes.
As how the master plan is. Okay.
Other questions on Article 7? Yeah, Gary.
I just was looking at this at the free percent pre-Adam for the term of 10 years to pay. What's that mean on this, with Article 7? Says here that there will be authorized insurance notes in our bonds, the aggregated principal amount not to exceed 1,620,000, the rate of interest not to exceed 3%. So what's the 3%?
So this article was written a little while ago. Ordinarily, when bond articles come to representative town meeting, there's a, because we, for example, in most other bonds where there is an interest rate that is of consequence, right? We set a, we set a limit, right? If we go to market and the prevailing market rate exceeds that limit, then our bond implication ceases. In this instance, the offer from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund turned out to be zero, which is below 3%.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Other questions on? There it is. Other questions on Article 7? I'm not used to using a microphone that actually amplifies my voice because in the Select Board meeting, they just go to BCTV, so I'm not used to it. I don't see any. Okay, so thanks for all those questions. That's why we're here tonight. So we're going to move on to Article 8. So for those longtime RTM members or those watching from home, you'll probably recognize this one. This is the article relating to the Mountain Home Park Special Benefit Assessment Tax District. So I'll read it out for you all. Article 8 is "To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $131,698.86 through the special assessment on property within the Mountain Home Park Special Benefit Assessment Tax District as approved by town meeting on March 24, 2007, and as delineated in the town ordinance entitled Municipal Act to Establish and Regulate the Mountain Home Park Special Benefit Assessment Tax District for the purpose of paying debt service on the capital improvement to the water and sewer lines serving the Mountain Home and Deepwood Mobile Home Parks." So this is explained further on page 17, but basically we're a pass-through for a loan that Mountain Home Park took out to do water and sewer work back in 2007. They, we pay the loan and they pay us back for the loan. And that's basically what this is. And that's like my very, very like basic explanation of it. I'm sure if we had Attorney Fisher here, he would explain it in a much more thorough and complete way. Any questions on Article 8? Gary?
Wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask.
Fair enough.
So did FEMA at some point come in? Because there was a lot of flood, did they add to this? Is this just?
What's the question?
Well, as far as would FEMA paying off some of the, was there any damage that there was done up there during the flooding as well, too?
Yeah, Liz?
The state of Vermont has given Tri-Park various loans and so forth. This is not part of it.
Okay.
This is a longstanding utility agreement, and as you'll see on page 18, it was recently restructured to be much less of an amount. But it is, again, just a pass-through that Mountain Home is responsible for this loan.
Right.
We are getting the loan for them because we are the municipality. They pay it back every year, and it's separate from any FEMA or any other utility grants that the state might give to Tri-Park or Mountain Home.
Okay, this recurring, basically. We've been doing it every year.
This is every year they pay back.
Right, that's for you newbies as well, too. Got educated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Gary. And I see Oscar. And I just mentioned, if you look on page 18, which is like the wraparound on this article, in 2021, there was a restructure of this loan. The town worked with the state so that we could lower the payment yearly on this. And so, yeah, I don't know if it quite answers Gary's question, but I guess other actors were involved originally and also as we continue this debt service. Oscar?
Real quick, just to confirm that I'm right about this and for information, this and Article 9, these two assessments are both assessment, they don't affect the general fund budget, correct? They're assessments of the mobile home community and the downtown improvement districts. Is that right? Nodding?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I was just confirming after my debacle on the other article that I got wrong. Okay. Other questions on Article 8? Seeing none. We're going to move on to Article 9, which is "To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $80,000 through the special assessment on properties within the downtown improvement district as approved by town meeting on March 19, 2005, and as delineated in the town ordinance entitled Municipal Act to Establish and Regulate Downtown Improvement Districts to be used for capital and operating costs for, of projects of the town's duly designated downtown organization as reflected in its work plan and budget." And the designated downtown organization for the town of Brattleboro is the Downtown Brattleboro Alliance, the DBA. So questions on, this is another article that we see every year, so just look to see if there are any questions on this. Yes.
Ruben Garza, District 9. I just wanted to point out that perhaps maybe this is the spot where Representative Abigail Menucha might address the remove of the two articles instead of Article 12, since this is directly related to the downtown Brattleboro Alliance.
Fair enough. I think at least for the article about the DBA, sure.
Correct.
If you want to, Abigail, or, and I can even address it a little bit. So the other article was for specifically the Community Marketing Initiative. That was like a separate thing that was coming out of the, out of DBA. And they came back to the board with like a completely different request. The marketing initiative was five years and in the, in the works, and this was the fifth year. The board asked for the DBA to come back, and the Chamber of Commerce to come back and kind of give a presentation on that work and how it's going and like how it should change or if it's, you know, successful. And they sort of came back and said, so we've done this for five years and we really, what we really need is someone who's advocating for getting grants and monies into the town. And we, we basically want to do this differently and we don't, we're not asking for like an annual thing. We want a pilot program to try this out and hire somebody who can be advocating for the downtown. And the board heard some discussion, quite a bit of discussion on it, and decided that they would fund that for two years. And then it would come back with, they would come back and sort of explain how that had, how effective that would have been. And we funded it through the revolving loan fund, which if you go and look at the revolving loan fund, it really speaks to economic development, which we felt was a very appropriate use for those, those monies. Now, look to other board members to get anything, correct me where I got things wrong. Daniel?
Or muddy the waters. My remembering of the rationale for why the Select Board was making that decision on its own was because the revolving loan fund is the, you know, is a fund to be used by the Select Board. And the Select Board had authority to, you know, choose what to fund out of that. And we, we do that at other times. I'm not quite sure the history of, you know, why some of these uses of that fund have come before town meeting and others not, but I remember Attorney Fisher kind of speaking to that a little bit.
Yeah, like, oh, yes, Liz. Go ahead.
Because the revolving loan fund allows for two distinct uses and two uses only, housing and economic development. And that is why we chose to have those funds come out of the revolving loan fund and not burden the taxpayer.
And, and then I see Ivan's question.
I guess, may I just add on to that? I think it's important to recognize that the revolving loan fund is money from the federal government through the Community Development Block Grant, which comes to the town and is not derived from your tax dollars. So it has no impact on your tax bill.
Ivan, unless your hand, oh, you already have the mic, great.
Ivan Hennessy, District 8. I'm not actually a representative, but I have a question about the structure of how these special assessments work. The properties within the special assessment zone, are they paying the standard rate and then this on top?
Yes.
Okay. So the town is like laundering a voluntary sort of fund for, for marketing. It's not necessary for it to be in the budget at all because all of the businesses could be putting that money in together to pay for that same expense.
I'm trying to understand. Yeah, we are.
I think those things are getting conflated a little bit. So this article is about raising and appropriating $80,000 through a special assessment, through a special tax on properties within the downtown improvement district to fund the work of the DBA. And then the other thing that we were talking about is what Abby brought up earlier, that there was a community marketing initiative that was run, I guess, by the DBA in the chamber that was funded through the revolving loan fund, AKA program income, AKA CDBG dollars. And so, two different things.
And, and this is partially why we really should just talk about the article that's worn, but I can't help myself. I really want everyone to be able to talk about everything that they want to, so.
Yes, so this is Article 9.
Yeah.
Which has a special assessment, and the special assessment is a tax on just a specific set of properties. It's not in place of the standard tax. It's, it's above that. And it exists only to fund this $80,000 DBA project.
Yeah.
So businesses that wanted to support that could just all put the money in together and support that, and it wouldn't affect any property taxes at all if it was structured that way.
Ian?
Yeah.
What this funds is the work of the DBA. This doesn't fund the community marketing initiative.
That's correct. That's what I'm saying.
And so the DBA's budget is, you know, this amount of money, right? Maybe plus some more, I don't know. The DBA will be at town meeting and will speak to that in more authoritative terms. But the community marketing initiative is a different part of money for a different purpose that is coming from a different place for use by this organization and another.
Liz?
Ian's asking a different question, if I understand it. Ian's asking, why is this?
Ivan.
Ivan, sorry. Why is this, I get my Ian to my Ivan. Why is this really an article? Because really, people could raise that money themselves, but they don't because the municipality needs, has the authority to create the special assessment, and it has the authority because it's also created this downtown improvement district, and downtown improvement district is a state and federal entity. And so because they've been formed and we have the authority to, to create this taxing district and essentially do this for them, raise this money on their behalf, similarly to what the Tri-Park was doing, that the municipality is involved because it's beneficial for everybody to have the municipality involved. It's, it's not tax dollars, it's the special assessment, but it, it has to be done in this manner.
All right, thank you. John?
Yep.
You guys, okay. I see a hand there. I had some other hands, but they've gone down now, so, oh, do you want to?
So Mr. Chan, are we, or are we not discussing the DBA and the COA thing at this point?
I think, I don't, I don't think we're going to talk about, let's talk about it at the end if we're going to. Because I just don't want to.
Because I do have something to say.
I understand that. I just, I don't want to conflate these and it's clearly like too confusing to talk about. Not too confusing, but I think it's confusing to talk about them both at the same time. So is there another question on, yeah?
Hi, Django Grace, District 9. I'm just wondering if there's a publicly available record of what the DBA has done or accomplished in the last year. I'm not seeing it in the annual report and I think that would be helpful for voters to see what this thing is actually doing. I've never heard of it.
Yeah, definitely there is. I know for, I know that it'll be in the select board backup material from the meetings where they've presented, but I can also see.
Right. There's an old one, but not from the last year, I believe.
Yeah, I'm, you're asking beyond this, correct?
Yes.
Beyond this, yes. So there, there's a, in this, there's a report on page 88. But you're asking, you're asking beyond this report if there's other material?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah. Okay. We've clarified?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Other, I think I misunderstood that question. But other questions on Article 9? Okay, seeing none. We're going to go on to Article 10. So this is the human services article. I'm going to spare you all and I'm not going to read out the entire thing because you've already heard me talk a lot tonight. So, but just the beginning of it is "to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $367,810 to support human service programs and facilities for the residents of Brattleboro to be allocated among 36 service providers in the following manner." And it lists it all out. I believe I drew the lucky straw to actually have this article at RTM again. So I will read out this entire thing at RTM. But needless to say, to save ourselves time tonight, these entities are allocated funds from work done by the Human Services Committee. They will be available at RTM to answer questions. There are members here tonight that are available to answer questions. But just very, you know, briefly, they were given, they were allocated an amount up to 2% of the last budget to give towards agent, organizations this year. They have a very thorough, rigorous process that they go through to determine how to allocate those funds. And this is the result of a lot of work. They didn't go all the way up to the 2%, they allocated lower than that amount because that's what they determined was the right amount to allocate based on the need that was requested in the community. And, yeah, and I think that if there are questions, I can try to answer them or direct them to members of the Human Services Committee. No? Okay.
Tim?
I'm looking at Tim. He has hand up first.
Hi. Oh, sorry. Yeah, just really quickly. Has anybody done a calculation as to which, I'm sure the committee has, how much, you know, because it was up to 2% and it was started out at 1.4 and was talked up at town meeting? Do we know the percentage that was actually spent?
I was kicking myself because I, but I think I just remember it's 1.7 is my, is my memory.
I was, I was sort of guessing that too, but I think just for discussion on Saturday, it might be handy to have that number in our brains somehow.
Mr. West is referring to Article 16 for when we will get to, I'm assuming.
Kind of.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks. Yes.
Looking at these numbers, some of these numbers just feel startlingly low to me. I know that in the past year, a lot of people who were getting Meals on Wheels isn't in here. The senior center was, is in there and I can, Brattleboro Senior Meals. So I'm not sure that, I don't know that that thought is even applicable. But I do know that the Meals on Wheels program had to cut back the services they were providing. Or there, there's an increase in need for it and they have to make some hard decisions about not bringing food to everyone who is requesting it. Yeah, just especially the, the places that directly support people in need with food. These just numbers look really low to me. And since you're saying that up to 2%, that was like, I guess you're saying some kind of predetermined ceiling for the percentage of the budget? And it ended up being lower because that is where you think the needs were? I was just, I'm a little curious about what was the process to determining that these numbers adequately meted the needs for support from these various local orgs?
Yes, I have hands from, I think, at least one member of the. So, Jessica. And just to, so.
Hi, Hannah Serrilla, District 8. I was on the committee this year. So these numbers are based on what was asked by these organizations and then determined from the application what was awarded. So a lot of the numbers are more based on what these organizations put forward with their, with their application rather than us determining a specific amount. So the difference between some of the higher numbers and the lower numbers, I feel like are really about the ask from the organization specifically, sometimes for operations in general or a specific program.
And the, and to answer the second part of the question on the cap, that's what Article 16 was that I was referring to. RTM sets that.
Article 16 is the 2% cap, but, so these are, am I, am I understanding correctly that no more than the, these numbers given that these agencies didn't ask for more than the numbers that are, appear here?
Page 21 of the report? Is that what you were going to say? Sorry. Yeah, so have you referred to page 21 of the report, which I'm going to flip, I'm going to flip to with you? Yep. So page 21 of the report shows the request and the recommendation. That's coming out of your RTM committee for each one.
So for clarification, not everybody was awarded the full amount that they asked for and that was based on looking at the applications, discussing it amongst the committee and making that determination. But the initial amount that was asked for was kind of the baseline based on what the organization put forward in the application itself.
And I see Frick's got a question and then I thought I saw another hand too. Oh, yeah.
Hi, Frick, Frick by District 3 squared. I think that's what we should call ourselves from now on. I want to just put in a plug for the fine work of this committee. They have saved us so much time and aggravation getting a better result than we ever got at town meeting. The, the days of the popularity contest, where we really weren't able to have the level of granular information about the various different organizations that were requesting money was, it, it was ridiculous. And the other piece of context here is that, for those who weren't at town meeting last year, we encouraged a significant, significant increase in that budget. I remember, I almost want to say we doubled it. It was a huge increase, whatever it was. So there is a lot of need out there. And I feel like the town is doing a, a good part that I, I feel proud of without barely lifting a finger to do it, which I, it's a, it's a win-win from my perspective. There's obviously a lot more need and money isn't going to solve a lot of it. But so I want to thank the committee, I guess is what I'm trying to say. All right.
Great. Thank you, Frick. And I see a hand back in the back there. And if everyone can just, I know who you are, if you can just state your name so everyone here knows who you are, that'd be nice.
David Minor, I'm in District 7. I am also on the Human Services Committee. Should be noted that although we were granted a cap of 2%, the amount of requests fell short of that. So it was roughly 430,000 and we only got applications totaling 417,000. So, and, you know, it was, I think his statement was, was correct. We did not go through applications and say, jeez, somebody applied only for 10, let's give them more. We felt that the organizations themselves, we trusted them to know what they're doing, what they need. And so we, we worked, you know, with the applications that they provided.
Thank you, David. And he is the Chair of your Human Services Committee. Yeah. And I echo Frick on the gratitude to the, to the work of that committee. Other questions on Article 10? Seeing none. All right. We're going to move on to Article Let. Oh. So if you just, if you want to stand up, wait till you get the mic. If you want to wait till you get the mic?
Zeke King, they them, or he him, I just, I guess I'm, I, I don't want to, I don't want to undermine the appreciation for the Human Services Committee. I don't doubt that they worked really hard and, you know, to consider this. And I, I'm just like so confused because there, there's such a need, well, originally I was going to say that, to follow up on. So, you know, can, I, I think that these, am I correct in, in thinking that these figures were decided on prior to the tragedy at Morningside and the loss of our only long-term residential shelter in town?
The decision was made in the late fall into the winter, so I believe that would be after.
This past fall?
Yeah.
It, it's just.
I don't know exactly the exact date because it kind of goes through a couple of steps before it gets.
I guess I'm just still baffled how these numbers can be low when they're, so low when there's like so many unsheltered people and people going hungry and just.
And Zeke, I think, I appreciate those points. But I think that that's starting to, we're starting to get into the substantive discussion, which is the RTM, not the informational meeting.
Fair enough.
So I'm going to ask you to just hold the rest of that and bring it forth for RTM to consider on the 23rd. And I see another question on Article 10.
Yes, I'm Andy Davis. I think one piece of information, and this is information, I'm not advocating. But one piece of information that has not been mentioned about the process, these numbers are not those organizations' full budget. They have budgets and other, are you all listening over here? Because I'm answering your question. These organizations.
Andy, Andy.
Have more, well, it was just they were having a conversation while I was responding. Just, so, just human decency. So these are not the full budgets of these organizations. These organizations have other sources of income. And what goes on at the Human Services Committee is looking at the full picture of what an organization is asking. And so I'm not, that's just a piece that hasn't been spoken. And it might be easy to look at those numbers and go, this is a tiny number for the need. But this is not the full source of resources for those organizations and projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Andy. I think it's an important point. Gary?
Yeah, hi Gary Schall, District 8. I'd just like to say from my own personal experiences in being on the Human Services and dealing with people in services and being a part of and having to use some of the services, I suggest anyone who feels to get a better understanding and a grip on how it operates and how it performs and what it does, that during RTM, when they ask if anyone wants to join the Human Services Committee, please come aboard so you'll get a better perspective and idea on how this works. It's intricate, it's deep. We get into the compassion and we get into, into the needs of many because the needs have increased, as we know, after 9/11 and after, what is it, COVID and everything? So to get a better perspective, because I've been on a lot of these organizations myself, I dealt with them, I suggest people to join these committees. So you'll have a better understanding, so your questions will be answered and it's best suited there, then you'll have a better understanding of how it works.
Thank you, Gary. Other questions or information for Article 10? All right, I don't see any. All right, we're going to move on to the next article, which is Article 11. We're still on page 14 in case anybody has gotten lost flipping through their book. Article 11 is "to see what compensation the town will pay its select board members." Everybody loves talking about how much they get paid for the job they're doing. So I get $10,000. Everybody sitting around me, not John, gets paid $8,000. The motion on RTM on the 23rd will be for those two, those two numbers. And you guys can give us raises, give them raises, cut them all, whatever you want to do. So, cut them, yeah. So, questions? Questions or comments or anything on Article 11? Oh, Spoon.
One of the major arguments for raising the pay.
Is this about to be a substantive discussion?
No.
Is there a question?
I'm just, I'm just making the, I'm going to make the observation.
Okay.
That there is no evidence that having increased the pay has increased the number of candidates or quality of candidates or has had any effect whatsoever.
All right. Thank you. Got another. And Spoon, I was, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm joking around a little. I think it's a really good point. I just make it for RTM when we're, yeah.
If you know the answer to this, that'd be awesome. What is like the most amount of money that any select board member in Vermont made?
I have no idea.
That's great to know.
Well, we can, we can find that out for you. We can, we'll, we will find that out, we'll find that out for RTM before, before the, before the 23rd. But there are quite a few select boards and I think we should probably, if we're going to get an accurate number, we should look at like boards of aldermen and city councils as well to make a determination on that. So we can look in, we can look into that? Yeah. Great. Other questions on Article 11? Seeing none? All right. We're going to move on to Article 12. So this is "to see if the town will transfer from the unassigned general fund balance the sum of $268,862 to be used for street paving and capital road improvement projects." So the unassigned general fund balances, the funds that are sort of remaining at the end of the year that haven't been assigned, RTM needs to approve the use of any of those unassigned funds. And so we're using them towards street paving and capital road improvements. Not, what's it?
Capital cost.
A capital cost. See, and we go, we, we use these funds towards capital non-operating costs so that, I guess. I guess, basically, you don't want to use some monies that you weren't expecting and put them towards operating costs because you don't want the town to get dependent on those funds that may not come the next year. So we always, we try as a policy to take unassigned general fund balance and apply it towards capital costs like road improvement so that we're not, the town isn't relying on its operation, operating costs with those monies. I think I saw a hand. Yes.
I'm just wondering if this will include bike lanes and other infrastructure besides just roads? Because we had a very comprehensive bike and walk action master plan came out recently and I'm wondering if this has any overlap with that? Yeah, that's my question.
Thank you. And sorry, give me your name one more time?
Django Grace.
Oh. Hey. Did you cut your hair?
Yeah.
There it is.
Bad run-in with the barber. It was-
It's good to see you. Liz wants to answer your question.
The ARPA funding included a considerable amount for the Bike Walk Action Plan.
So this money does not go toward that at all?
No, it's going for roads and sidewalks, but the Bike Walk Action Plan is getting several hundred thousand dollars, from what I understand, from, of ARPA money.
Is there any way that members of RTM can have a say in where this money specifically will go in the improvement of roads and stuff? Or is that just like, it goes to DPW and they do what they want with it?
The ARPA discussion that was at the Select Board was quite extensive and the bike-
No, no, I'm, excuse me, I'm talking about the Article 12, like the money in Article 12.
Well, I'll just tell you that the Bike Walk people came to that meeting, discussed it in depth, and got the Select Board to approve several hundred thousand dollars specifically for the Bike Walk Action Plan.
You got the town manager to actually talk, so.
Yeah, maybe. I'll do my best here. Yeah, that's a good question. The work plan that the DPW puts together each year is based on sort of the, the condition of the roads around town. And they are currently working on this asset management system, getting all of those roads into the, this asset management system, which will describe a process over many years to bring our roads back up to, to standard. So this particular funding is focused on the, the roads themselves, and they just completed a pavement, pavement condition assessment. And that's what that, this funding will be going towards the roads that need it the most. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Spoon.
I think if I recall my, the little bit of research I did years ago, what was it, the National Government Standards Boards or something like that, which sets a lot of the models or, the standards for municipal finances and, among other things. And, and with that and with having read quite a bit on the subject of, and I'm referring here to the surplus funds, rainy day funds, reserve funds, whatever. And generally, it is good policy, it is the best policy, that if you're going to spend this money at all, it should go into capital projects. Paving is just maintenance. That's like getting a new roof or a new coat of paint on the house. These are things you do all the time to take care of the things you have. I think if people look on page 11, they'll see a section on bonds and notes, which I assume is referring to how much the town is currently in debt. And although I'm surprised it's that low, so maybe I'm not reading the whole thing. Maybe there's a lot more in the, in the audit about debt and stuff. But in any case, what you'll see there is it's showing that at this moment, it seems we have a million dollars worth of debt. Must be higher, because down below it says we paid 400,000 in interest. So there's probably a lot more debt that's not listed. It would seem that since this is the taxpayer money, the reserve funds, it should be used for something both more permanent and substantial, like a capital project, or paying down a loan so we're not paying so much interest. By, by using the reserve funds for maintenance, all we're doing is we're moving, we're not saving a dime. Either we would pay to have the roads paved through taxes or we would either direct it to taxes or through the reserve fund, which is also taxes. So we're spending the same amount of money to pave the roads, whether it comes out of the reserve funds or the taxes. But we can save money if we apply the reserve funds to some of the debt that we have. If we reduce the debt by $240,000 or something, that would be a heck of a lot of interest that we would not be paying.
Thank you, Spoon. And I'm going to remind again that let's hold the substantive discussion comments for RTM. Other questions? Oh, boy. Questions in the far back first for, I'm sorry, we're still on Article 12.
Jessica back there.
Very back. And I just wanted to thank Jessica again for walking all around this gymnasium over and over again. All right.
Yes, sorry. Rich Race, District Seven. I was, I'm not sure if this is the right place for the question, but I was curious why the DPW budget is so low this year.
That is the next article.
Hi, Kevin O'Brien again. Is this the full amount for the unassigned general fund balance, the total here?
Yes.
Thank you.
In light of the really shoddy job that they did on this, this Western Ave project, is the town planning on taking any like legal action or something to recoup the money from the, you know, you know, inarguably not very great job they did on some of this roadwork?
I'm not sure how much that relates to Article 12.
Oh, okay. All right. Is that not, that's not related to? I apologize if that's not related. It is related to just the more general issue of paving and improvements.
Other questions on Article 12? So Spoon, can you keep it brief?
One of the things I did not mention is, and I think this is a shortcoming, the town does not have a policy about this surplus, about the reserve surplus, the above 10% that, that we're working with here. And, and we were aware of that years ago when John Lysenring was around and he was helping us with a lot of new policies. That's when the reserve policy itself came into being. And he had recommended at that time that it was very important to also have a policy about how to deal with the excess reserves over the 10%. Otherwise, it begins to get, it begins to feel like it's just up for grabs who can ever get their hands on it.
Thank you, Spoon. Other questions on Article 12? Okay, so we're going to move on to Article 13. This is to see how much money the town will raise, appropriate expend to defray all of the expenses and liabilities in addition to any funds authorized for any other articles in these warnings. So Article 13, it doesn't say it, but this is like the big, this is the budget item. So this is where we talk about the budget. So if you turn to page in the big book, it's page 103. And then there's also a more extensive breakdown, which if you didn't grab on your way in, is also available on the table there where Hillary Francis is. She's holding it in her hand right there. Okay, and I, I recognize the time already, so I'm going to try, I have a pretty long presentation, but I'm going to try to cut some of it to be a little briefer. But I wanted to start with, so if everyone has turned to 103. So I want to start before we get into the specifics on the budget. I want to talk a little bit about the budget process this year for the board. So we had a after-action budget discussion on April 18th of 2023, where we, it was after RTM and we sort of looked at representative town meeting, what came out of representative town meeting, and then also the budget process as well. We had a town manager who had been with us for like three months at that point, four months. And so we, as a board, voted on a budget process moving forward that was going to seek to get some pub, more public participation sooner in the process and look at policies that would work towards goals that the board was making in the year. And that kind of reflected in the process moving through the fall, which started with a budget open house, which was held at the Brooks Memorial Library on September 28th. And that's where we had department heads and members of departments from the town of Bratton Borough Municipal Government there presenting and talking to individuals and board members about both like the work that they do, but then also things that they're looking to try to achieve in the future, moving forward with future budgets. And then in December of 2023, the Select Board kind of began in earnest its budget discussion, starting, so what we did this year was we started with a base budget that had essentially base operations for what it would take to just do what the town is doing right now and nothing more. And what the tax increase that would look like, because, because of inflation and other reasons that we'll get into, it's going to go up some. And so we looked at the base budget. And then the board was presented with a series of what we called budget alternatives or budget options, which were both capital and base budget initiatives. Some of them were new employees, others were projects or funds, things that were not essential to the base budget of what the town will do, but could improve or expand services that are offered by the town. And the, those, those alternatives were derived from the public meeting in the library, but then also from the department heads and discussions with them about what they're looking for. And then the board, over the next two months, heard from the community and department heads and each other discussing those many alternatives and how to incorporate them into a final budget, which we came to on the, I believe it was on the 20, on the 16th of January, we came to a final budget that we adopted. So kind of getting into it briefly, I want to start on page 103. And we're going to start with the expenses, because this is basically what determines the tax rate and what monies we need to collect to be able to pay for all of the things that we do for the town of Bratton Borough. So the FY25 expenses for the budget is $22,993,830. Looking at the personnel expenses, we basically broke it down this year into staffing. This is at the top of page 103. And then employee benefits, which is at the bottom of page 103. So one of the things that we run into sometimes when we're looking at these budgets year after year, and we're looking at maybe incorporating new people into the budget, new staff positions, there's sometimes a concern that there's like a hidden cost because we are just looking at their salary. But then there's all these other expenses that go into it with their health insurance and other benefits. And so it's really important that we're considering both the employee benefits and the actual staffing when we're considering including new employees, but then also just looking at the increases that happen with, you know, when every year we're potentially having the staffing increase, but also those benefits are, are going to cost the town more. If you have been watching the news or you own a business or something, you know that health insurance is incredibly expensive. So for FY25, the staffing total is $10,236,516, which is a, which is 44.5% of our overall budget for the town of Bratton Borough. If you add in the $3,833,787 for all of the employee benefits, that's at the bottom of that employee benefits chart. We find that with, with the staffing, the total is 61.2% of our entire budget is just staffing and the benefits and costs that go with having staff. And I so, I sort of paused there for a moment, because I always kind of want to remind us when we're talking about the budget, like what are we actually talking about? And like, the majority of what we are talking about here are people. So the town employs people and those people provide services, and those services are what create municipal government. And there are lots of equipment and tools and resources that those people need to do the jobs that they do. But like 61.2% of everything that we raise monies, both through taxes and other funds, is going towards employing those people to do the jobs that we want them to do. And so looking at the salary expenses first for staffing, it's going up by 13.1% over FY24. So that's a total increase of $1,185,322. I want to talk a little bit about why that is. So first, the Select Board approved a cost of living increase of 4%. That's, we abbreviate that as COLA, and I'll be referring to it that way for the rest of the presentation. So that's for all general fund employees. And on top of that, we also completed all four of our collective bargaining agreements. The town has four unions. And we did all of those collective bargaining agreements in the spring. And with those came increases for all of those employees. Basically, each of their steps as they're, as they're employed longer, those increase as part of that negotiation. And it really depends on union to union, what those increases look like. For example, the fire department's schedule has, they have step increases at 2% each time, where the local 98, which is all of our administrative staff union, they have less steps. So maybe the increase might be less total, but each of those steps is like a 4% increase versus a 2%. So it varies from union to union, but some of the increase you're seeing here is that is the result of our negotiations with those four unions and coming out with collective bargaining agreements. And our goal in the collective bargaining agreements this year was to provide compensation that was internally fair and equitable, but also competitive with the surrounding communities to, you know, make sure that we're retaining qualified staff, because one of the things that costs the town a lot of money is finding and hiring people when we lose people. Both the finding them is expensive and the training and actually getting them on board is really expensive. So we save money by paying our people a competitive wage so that they stay. And we, and we provide them with good benefits so that they can provide for their families. Okay, so also for staffing, you're seeing some other increases. Most notably, if you look at fire, you've got- you've got an increase there. That's accounting for the decision that was made in September by the Bratton Borough Select Board, which is expanding the Bratton Borough Fire Department. And that's including EMS superintendent and then six other Bratton Borough firefighters. We could talk the entire meeting about that one decision, but I'm not going to get into it in that detail. But what I can say right now is you'll see this impacting in a couple of different places in both expenses and revenues in the budget. And the discussion that the board had was making a determination, looking at all of the expenses that it would cost and all the revenues that we would receive, what was the best possible impact for the town of Bratton Borough on a fiscal level plus other factors that don't really involve money. And the board made a decision to move forward with municipal EMS based on that calculation. Other positions that we see in here are part, some of those budget alternatives. You'll see in the library, we have an increase of 12.9%. That's the library outreach program specialist. You also see the information technology coordinator. The assistant town clerk was a part-time job. That's not a full-time job, so you'll see that increase there. Yeah, and where was the, I'm trying to think of where the IT. In Town Manager's office, the IT coordinator is in Town Manager's office. So all three of those were budget alternatives that the board chose to move forward with as part of that separate second part of our budget discussion. Okay, so going down to benefits below staffing. So that's going to be an increase of $48,511. That's a 1.3% increase over FY24. So it's, the increases are generally around social security, employee retirement, health savings payments, and health plan reimbursements. And what you'll see, one of the probably most notable things that you'll see in here is a reduction in the health insurance of $79,255. This is a, it's kind of a, it's a little bit of a misnomer. It's not a savings to the town in total. It's a saving to the general fund. And the reason for that is because our finance director, Kim Frost, has come up, has a new way of basically accounting for different employees in the town and where their home sits. And there are employees in the town who basically are paid for through some of our enterprise funds that are not the general fund. And so the general fund has been basically paying more than its fair share of employee benefits and salaries for like ever. And so in a better calculating, administering of the budget, we're putting the real cost to those enterprise funds, to the enterprise funds, instead of having the taxpayer and the general fund pay for all of it. So I don't want people to say, oh, wow, we saved $79,000 in health insurance. That's not really the case. The general fund saved that, but that cost is being, is going to be seen in those enterprise funds. Those enterprise fund budgets are discussed at a later point during the Select Board year. They're not at RTM.
Example of an enterprise fund.
Parking fund. Sorry, thank you. Utility fund. So, okay, moving on, and thank you for that. Okay, so we're going to flip to the next page, and that's department expenses. So that's going to be page 104. So largest increases you're going to see are fire, police, town clerk, public works, and human resources. So keeping in mind sort of what I've been talking about here, we've moved away from people, and now we're in expenses. We're in equipment, that kind of stuff. We're not talking about the individuals anymore. So for fire, those increases are for, are, most of them are related to EMS. So those are going to be additional gasoline, diesel, operating supplies, medical oversight, state-provided assessments, EMS billing contract, the medical supplies and equipment maintenance and vehicle maintenance. And then there are some other fees that are included in that which go towards electric, water, and basic occupancy costs for the fire department. And there aren't any staffing-related departmental increases that are related to that. For police, you'll see, if you look at the police line item, you got an increase of 23.5%. That is going towards telephone services called V-BURBS, which is the state law enforcement network, equipment for our cruisers and our body worn cameras, evidence tracking and storage for those body and cruiser cameras, integrating that camera storage into the state statistical software, which is called ValCor. It's also going towards additional non-lethal weapons and also towards professional services for issues such as translation services needed for our community, prisoner transport for services so that our Bratton Borough Police Department can stay active in Bratton Borough instead of traveling I-91. Basically, sometimes we have to transport people from Southern State Correctional Facility, or hopefully only Southern State Correctional Facility, down to like the court or something like that. So we're alleviating some of that responsibility so that we have more, we have officers who are able to fulfill their duties in the town. And also forensic laboratory services and support for a de-escalation training simulator. So you'll see all of that is reflected in the police item for the departmental expenses. Moving through town clerk, it's only an increase of $4,300. It just is 7.5% increase because that departmental line isn't actually that large to begin with. So an increase of that much isn't that much. That's mostly going towards election-related costs. And as I was talking about earlier, elections are a huge part of what the town clerk does, and it's a really important thing that we're making sure that we're funding sufficiently so that we're doing a good job of keeping them safe and efficient. Okay, and then moving forward to services and supplies. So dropping down to other services and supplies, basically what we're looking at is another reduction in the health insurance expenses. I'm just trying to find here. Sorry, as I lose my place. Oh, I apologize. I was reading from the wrong page. So for other services, basically, we're seeing increases from general services, municipal center, and human services. For the general services line, you're seeing an increase of 16.4%. That's due to increases in software licensing, computer equipment maintenance, and online permitting. The municipal center, it's mostly related to fuel and building maintenance. It's an old building where it's costing us more money to maintain it. And then, you know, we're hoping to, basically, by putting more money into maintaining it now, we're saving the town money in the future when there are worse things that happen to it that we're going to have to pay more and more money for. Moving on to some notable decreases is on the auxiliary services. You'll see, and we're still on page 104, you have a decrease of 38.1% on the auxiliary services. That is basically what you're seeing is the ambulance service. So we had a line item in there paying for an ambulance contract. Now that we are, we're going to be providing ambulance service through the municipal government, that we no longer need to pay for the contract. And it also is taking out the community marketing initiative, which is what we discussed earlier, that that's, that was something that was coming out of the general fund. So that's now coming out of the revolving loan fund, and it's no longer the marketing initiative. It's a different project. And, okay. Moving on to the page 105, you've got transfers out. So basically, you have transfers out to capital, and that's going to be $1,773,723. If you look at that, that's on page 109, are what those transfers out are for. The other transfer that we had out of that was to the global warming fund, and that is it. Am I getting it? No, okay. Okay, and then moving on from that, we're going to go to debt service, which is the last bit on page 105, which is the, this is the first debt service payment for the Living Memorial Park Bond. And that is going to be a total of $375,000. And the net impact, after other debt instruments are enjoyed in the planning reduction, it's going to be a total of 3.4% increase. So it's $334,300. So the actual increase is 30.4%. Flip over and very quickly go on to revenues. Revenues are going to be, for property taxes, is going to be a total of $17,631,900, or, yeah, $970. That's going to be a change of 4.3% total. So that's the, that's going to be the impact for taxes coming from this proposed FY25 budget on the property tax increase. And we can talk a little bit more about that once I'm done, on like what that will look like impacting an individual household. And then you'll see that we also have increases for rooms and meals taxes and sales tax. And we basically project those increases in revenue based on how much we're making from prior years, and we're looking at that number, and we're projecting them to be increasing at this rate. And it's important that we're trying to project those accurately so that we're not overtaxing the residents of the town because we're too, we're being too conservative in projecting what our other revenue sources will be. But we don't want to be too optimistic and then under-tax and then end up with not sufficient funds. So it's a balancing act that we do. If you keep going down through, you'll see that for fees and services on page 106, a lot of stuff stays the same. Big changes are going to be for fire. You've got a huge increase because we're, what we're anticipating in that line item is the revenue that we're going to receive from the EMS service. And if you watched the discussion on this, you'll know that we projected a conservative number on that revenue that we would receive from the municipal service, and that number is reflected in this line item. Yeah, and I'm going to, because I have now spoken for a long time, I'm going to try to wrap it up and just say that, basically, the total planned expenditure for FY25 is a $22,993,830. And that's going to be an increase total of $955,000 over the current budget, 4.3%. So this is a, you know, the board believes that this is a favorable budget for the town, for RTM to consider. It allows us to continue either level funding or expanding all the services that departments the town of Bratton Borough provide for the residents of the town. It is accurately reflecting the decision that the town of Bratton Borough Select Board made when it came to municipal EMS, moving away from a hybrid model towards a fully municipally provided model. It's addressing capacity needs in the public works and town clerk's office. And it's also, very importantly, addressing a major vulnerability that we have in the IT department. It's addressing a $1.8 million in critical capital replacement needs that are consistent with our capital, our long-term capital plan. And finally, we incorporated some solid projections in our other revenue sources to save taxpayer money and try to keep our tax increase as low as possible. And finally, it involves some good reworking of the budget to make sure that the general fund is really only paying for what the general fund uses so that we're not overburdening the general fund when we're bringing it to RTM for consideration. I'm proud of the budget. I've taken up way too much time to discuss, so I'm going to open it up for questions or comments now. And I see Dave Garenstein with a hand in the back.
Thank you. The format in which the budget is presented is very, very different from the way it's been for decades. And I'm wondering whether the town manager or the finance director could explain to us how that came to be?
So the format was, came out of, first of all, if you're referring to the fact that we presented the expenses prior to the revenues, that was kind of just the realization that it's the expenses to do a certain, certain amount of services across the town that drives the revenue side. So we have some more or less fixed revenues, you know, things that we can predict. But the one that really is the balancer, I guess I would say, is the property tax. So if we figure out what is the program that the town departments would deliver and that the Select Board wants to have happen in terms of work plans throughout all the departments, then we can figure out what the revenues we would need to raise in order to support that level of service. That was one of the big drivers for like changing that around because it just seemed to make more sense as you think through the process of developing a budget. The other thing is, you know, we wanted to, it is a little bit different. We see this as a lot of the information that you used, that you're used to seeing in here is sort of what the staff uses to develop this, this ultimately big number of $22,993,830, which is what will be voted on at town meeting. How you slice and dice that and figure out like what is, what is the rationale for that number is, we thought, presented better here in this kind of a format that you can see a lot of it all at once. You can understand what percent of the total overall budget each of these lines is. You can see the changes over time. That were, those were some of the things that stayed the same, too, was we tried to also show the history as much as possible here. All of the other information that went into the estimates in these lines is available on, in like really large detail on the OpenGov budget site, which is available through the town website and also is referenced in the budget message here. Those are some of the big takeaways on that, and I appreciate the question.
Other questions on the FY25 budget? Yes.
Just for my own information, maybe others on page 107 for other revenue. The lines governmental, employee contributions, and miscellaneous. Could you just touch on each of those and say what they, what they are?
Yeah, that is a good question. Yeah, that is a good question.
Governmental, employee contributions, and miscellaneous.
I'm not sure if you know what those are.
I could shed a little light on that. Governmental is going to include things like state current use payments, where the municipality is refunded for the lost revenue of having land maintained within the current use program. There are some other smaller governmental sources. For example, state assistance with roads is also lumped into governmental. I think that's probably the lion's share of that particular line. Employee contributions. This is representative of the employees' share of health insurance costs. The premiums are not exclusively covered by the towns and by property taxes, but a portion of that cost is borne by each of the employees. I think those were the two questions.
Does miscellaneous have a major contributor?
I should have a better answer for you. I do recall within miscellaneous, interest that we receive is a significant contributor to that. Pardon?
But this is also where we have the opportunity to get the full answer to that. And we can provide it for you prior to representative town meeting. Other questions, Doctor?
Thank you. Bob Tortellani, Section 8 of Town, or whatever you call it. I'm not clear on what's going on with facility maintenance under personnel expenses. I know it's... It looks like you're ending that. But both under expenses and... On the next page, under supplies. You had figures there and then they've been ended. So I don't understand what's going on there. Thank you.
So for facility maintenance on the staffing, that's moving that employee from facility maintenance into public works. So if you look at the line item above that, you'll see that increase does not reflect only that move because also, public works had... One of the budget option alternatives that we took was basically taking an employee there and giving them more responsibility, increasing their pay. So that's also reflected there. But basically, the facility maintenance work that was being done was moved into the public works line item. And I believe that will reflect the... What was the other half of that question?
Well, under services and supplies. If there was an expense that was eliminated...
Under services and supplies on the next page. That was eliminated, so there was a change there.
The $1,825. Yeah. I believe it's also related to the same move over to... But I see Pete Lynch is available to...
Correct on both counts. Both personnel and supplies have been moved. No real change, just moved into DPW.
And did the supplies relate to the personnel shift?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions on the FY '25 budget?
You'll probably shut me down. George Carville, District... What are we? Three. No, nine. District seven. What you've done on the... With moving the money for developed revolving loan fund really goes counter to what was done at representative town meeting last year. If you look at the minutes, page 25, Paula Melton made a motion to take that separate article, it was Article 11 last year, and make it part of the general fund.
Are we talking about FY '25 budget right now?
Yep. Well, you've said that that's the only place we can talk about this.
No, I said at the end of the meeting on other business.
I'm sorry. Can I just finish now and be done with it?
Go ahead.
Thanks. My point was, they tried last year to fold that money into the general fund, to say, let's not talk about this anymore. That was defeated. The attempt to move that into the general fund was defeated. And we kept it at... They wanted to keep it as a separate article. Instead, this year, you guys have moved and hidden it from us so it can't even really be discussed. Franz, maybe you can tell me if there was ever a worse one. But I've never, in my recent memory, heard the Finance Committee excoriate the selectmen more than they have in the Town Finances Committee report, talking about, "We do not support the use of public funds for projects whose goals are unclear." "Uneasy about the blurring of boundaries between public and private initiatives, and the fees are excessive." I think it's been a big mistake here, and I don't see how it can get addressed by the representative town meeting. So they've taken and walked away with it, and we don't have anything to say about it. I don't like it.
Other questions on the FY '25 budget?
Rick Sprite, District 3 squared. I have an ongoing concern about bids, uncontested bids, when we get situations where we only get one bid on something from somebody who knows what our voted budget is already on whatever that item is. And I am wondering... It's a two-part question. One is, how often do we have that situation? And in that situation, are there ever any attempts on the part of the town to push back on their bid number to try and come up with something that is perhaps a little more in the interest of the town? I mean, I can think of specific projects that raise concerns for me because I know about them. But I won't go into that right now. So how often do we get?
Like, a single bid for...
Correct.
Yeah. I don't know... Like, I don't know the exact number for it.
I haven't seen one yet in a year being here, but it may happen. We're not in a highly competitive market for many services, so we have to go with what we get. It's certainly a sound practice for municipal management to try to get as many bids as you can on a public procurement. We are currently in the process of trying to do that for trash hauling. We will see if we get more than one bid there. We certainly would need to negotiate with whoever comes forward on any public procurement if the bid was deemed to be higher than the staff estimate.
So I guess that's kind of an answer to my second part of the question. We do sometimes push back.
If we got a price that was higher than the staff estimate, we certainly would try to value engineer that and negotiate. Yeah. Depending on the type of procurement.
Okay. Perhaps later, we could talk about some of my specific concerns. Thank you.
Other question? Oh, yes.
I also have stuff on my lap, and it's getting late. So if I sit that there, I...
No, that's totally fine.
Perfect, thank you. I am in the addendum, section, page 20, towards the bottom. I believe it's within public works, looking at equipment. And just looking for a reminder to where that $125,000 went. We didn't fund it last year, and we're not funding it in the future. And I'm wanting to make sure that our DPW has all the equipment that they need.
Yeah. Kim would like to speak to that. You've got to get closer to the mic, Kim.
Oh, sorry. If you look on page 21 on the top, where it says it's kind of in highway equipment and vehicle maintenance, you'll see we moved some of those line items. We just consolidated line items to not have as many categories and to put them kind of where they belong.
Marvelous. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Franz.
I'd like to just give a very brief response to what George asked me.
Let's wait till other business at the end.
Okay.
Cool.
I wanted to reinforce what I was saying a little bit earlier about the use of the reserve funds. And as I look now and I see now, that the town, in the audit report on page 121 or something, it... We learned that we're 30... We've got $31 million, over $31 million in debts and liabilities. And on page 105, we see that we're paying this year to come $1.4 million worth of interest. And interest is really money down the toilet because it doesn't really put anything on the street. It's just money. And so if you're going to take it... If you can use taxpayer money to pave anyway, that should come out of the regular budget and use the other taxpenny money, our reserves, to reduce the debt and save us a lot more.
Thank you, Spoon. Kim wants to speak to that, too?
I just want to say that the $1.4 million is principal and interest. It's not just interest. Those are principal payments on general fund debt. And the $31 million that you're referencing on page 121 also includes utility fund debt because that's the complete debt of the town. So they are... You know, those payments of the utility fund would... Will be in that enterprise fund when we bring that to the board.
Other questions on FY '25 budget? Which is actually Article 13. All righty. Move on to... So, okay, we've been living in page 105 to 109, but we're going to move back to page... We're now on page 15 of the budget book. So we're on to Article 14. So that's going to be to elect two representatives to the Capital Grant Review Board for a term of one year, members to be nominated from the floor. And I'm just looking for which page that is on. That's on page 20, if you want to read a little bit more about that. Any questions on Article 14? Nope. Okay. We'll move on to Article 15, to see if the town will elect or appoint members to the Town Finance Committee for a term of one year, members to be nominated from the floor. Any questions on... So RTM Finance Committee is one of... Like, we talked about the Human Services Committee. It's another committee of RTM, so it's appointing members to that board. Any questions? Seeing none. Move on to Article 16. See if the town will direct the select board to include a specific amount of the FY '26 budget to be allocated to human services funding. Okay, so this is the... This is the article that we were kind of discussing earlier when we were looking at Article 10. This is where we will... The motion will propose a percentage, and then RTM can discuss what allocation of the FY '26 budget will go towards... Up to for the Human Services Committee to consider for allocations. And I see, one hand, Oscar.
Oscar, District 9. Just process question. So there will be a number in the motion, correct?
1.4.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Sorry to interrupt you. Did you have more of a question? No. And I can just speak to that really quickly. It's just been 1.4 every single year that we've done the motion, and we're just keeping it at 1.4. We think it's a good starting spot. And I'm happy to like... I think I would actually lean into being like, talking substantively about this, so I'm not going to go too much into it. But I think, given where your committee landed on allocating funds based on both what was requested of them and their own determination, we sort of made a decision to just keep it at the 1.4 for starting space. And we saw that starting at 1.4 didn't keep you all from debating it at length and coming to a different number. So it didn't seem like it halted debate or anything like that. It was just a good starting spot.
Hello? Hey. I'm not gonna... I didn't want to debate or argue about the number or anything like that. I just, at some point, talked to somebody who said that there might not be a number in the motion. And I was confused about how we would then amend that. But if there is going to be a number, then I'm good.
Franz? No. Cool. All right. Thank you, Oscar. Other questions or comments on Article 16? No? Okay. We're going to move on to Article 17, to see if the representative town meeting shall set the number of Human Service Committee members at no more than 11 members, set committee members to be elected at the annual representative town meeting, and maintain this number of committee members until rescinded or amended by a warrant article and vote of representative town meeting. Yeah, fairly self-explanatory. Questions or comments on...
I think so, yeah. Thanks. Abby Manoukian, District 8. It should have been about the last article. But I guess I am confused, even though Oscar was happy with 1.4. If you landed on 1.7 this year and decided... The Human Services Committee started with 2%. And then I think you said, actually gave 1.7.
Yeah.
Why did we decide 1.4 is a good... I know you tried to say it's good with debate, but it's just like more work to have to start higher. So why not just start with what was given this year?
Not that it was good for debate or something. It's just that we just have done it at 1.4%. I don't think we had... I don't think I had the number of 1.7% when we were looking at what to do, what to start it at. But I don't... I really... It's just a number to start the debate. It could be 1.7%. It could be 2%. It could be 0%. I think it's literally... The tool of this article is to just give it to RTM to make a decision about what number to start it at. Or what number to... What number to vote to.
Yeah. I'm still disappointed that the starting number is not the actual number that was done this year. That seems like logically, it would make more sense to start there.
Other question? Well, I guess that was Article 16. This is...
I'm sorry. I thought we were... Yeah. Article 17, I think. What... I'm wondering what the logic behind 11 members is. Does it... Would it be... Seem to become more unwieldy if it were larger? And what sort of processes were included to ensure that the... That part of the committee would consist of recipients of the services?
So I believe that this article is coming out of a request from the committee. Is my understanding. And... Does David want to speak to it?
It is coming from the committee. And so we started the year with a dozen members, six of whom were brand new. And there was a lot of scrambling to put together meetings in time so that we can get everybody on the same page and understand and talk about the process, educate ourselves, and come to understand what we were looking to accomplish. We started with 12. We quickly went down to 11, and then through time, we lost another member. So it takes a lot of time and a lot of effort once we begin to get going. We took, we received, I believe, 37 applications. We had roughly, we get them in the beginning of November. We have some meetings. We have an informational meeting prior to that. And then once we get the applications, we have until the middle of December in order to get everything done. We review them, and it is a, it's a good effort. I mean, I think people take it, the committee members take it seriously, and we read through every application that's presented. In order to be able to manage that process, there was a lot of juggling. We had to make sure that people are available, and so the idea is to have a manageable group, which I think is something that you pointed to. Membership is open to anybody, you know, from the RTM. Now, there were 10 at the end of the year. We are, we have two or three who will not be coming back, so from the floor, we will put forward the members who, on the committee, who wish to continue, and then we will have, be looking for others to participate.
Great. Thank you. Tara's got her hand up next. No, I'm going to let the next.
Tara O'Brien, I also was on, District 8. I was also on the Human Services Committee. And just to back up what David had explained, when you ask about agency or representation, rather than making sure there's representation on our committee, we ask the organizations what they were doing so that the people that they were serving have representation in the decision-making in those organizations. So those organizations were accountable to us, to show us if those people had any agency and power in those organizations. So we feel that we asked the organizations to lay that out for us, so that even if we weren't representative of those agencies, of those populations being served, we had adequate evidence that those people had a voice in those organizations.
And before we get into a long back-and-forth on this article, I just want to remind us, we're just doing information and questions today, and then we can get into a debate about this at RTM. And by "we," I mean you all can enter a debate about this at RTM. So Zeke, is your question, is it a question or clarifying? Because I think we had two members of the committee to clarify your questions.
No, I almost said I was trying to debate, but I guess I was leaning towards, had to go back. I feel like my question wasn't, well, it was somewhat answered, but, yeah, I guess I, so, yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to be able to, I'd love to be able to discuss that further. When would that, would that be after Article 20, or?
So, no, no, you will get to discuss it on Article 17 at Representative Town Meeting on March 23rd, when this article comes up.
Okay. Great.
No, and it's a fair confusion. It's like, I think it's always a line that we walk in this meeting because we're, you know, people want to talk about it substantively, and I get that, but it's just, we need to just have questions and comments for this.
No, I didn't realize, actually, when I first asked, I didn't realize that the, this committee was all representatives of, that the Human Service Committee was comprised only of Representative Town Meeting members. So that clarified, that clarified something, but I, so, and what was your name again?
David.
David, okay.
Great. Thank you. Frick, another question or clarifying comment on Article 17?
Frick Spright. I just wanted to say that when it comes to committees, we have to strike a balance between the, what the work of the committee is and our ability to get enough members and being able to have a quorum to be able to hold our meetings. And on the Energy Committee, we mercifully just avoided having serious quorum problems, thankfully. But that is another good reason to set the number of a committee just right so that we don't run into problems where we can't even meet because we can't get a quorum.
Okay. Other questions or comments on Article 17? I don't see any, so we'll go on to Article 18. So that's to see if the town will elect or appoint members of the Human Services Review Committee for a term of one year, members to be nominated from the floor. So we've talked about this committee quite at length this evening, but, yeah, they review the human services applications. It's a very, there's a lot of work that goes into it. It's really helpful for RTM in consideration at the actual RTM meeting. A lot of work goes in ahead of time. I'll definitely give the floor to any RT member who wants to speak about, who's on that committee who wants to speak about it, but, yeah, see if there's any questions. Great. Seeing none. We'll move on to Article 19. So that's to elect three trustees for the Brooks Memorial Library to serve three years, and one trustee to fill a two-year unexpired term. The names for consideration for the three-year term are, three-year terms of 2024 to 2027 are Leo Schiff and Sikra Kaufman and Kate O'Connor. The person for the two-year term of 2024 to 2026 is Margaret Adetson. Any questions or comments on Article 19? And there's a little bit, I think there's a little more information on this one as well. Yeah, there's a little more information on this on page 23 as well. Then we'll move on to Article 20. So this is a transat, any other business that may lawfully come before the meeting. So, yep, we had a conversation, a little bit of discussion on those two articles, and I'm happy to hear that, but is, more importantly, are there any other things that people want to speak to on Article 20 right now? Frick.
I have been trying to figure out how to make good use of the charter change process and also promote more vibrant democracy in general. And I was in conversation with Hillary about how to best promote and educate people about ranked choice voting. And I would love input from anybody, including Hillary, when she recovers from everything that's happened in the last little while, to see how best to do that in a way that doesn't drive the town clerk's office nuts and gives people some window into ranked choice voting and how it works and its benefits. So that's one thing to look forward to on Article 20 from the O'Leary.
Little sneak peek. Thank you, Frick. Other board member, other RTM members want to speak to Article 20? Franz, did you want to take an opportunity to speak there?
Well, what I wanted to say, thank you, Ian, is that I think the RTM Finance Committee did a really great job, and I can't believe the level of detail that went into this report, and I hope everybody will really read it carefully and learn from their perspectives on all the different parts of the budget. But I do not agree with what this report says about the allocation of the ARPA funds. I think there's some misapprehensions, shall we say?
I wonder whether there are any debates.
No, I'm, George asked me to comment on this. So I, what I'm saying is that if anyone wants to know what I think about it, please come and talk to me. That's really my point, is that, not to get into the specifics of it here, but every Wednesday from 4:30 to 6:30, I sit at the works, welcome people who want to come and talk about any town-related matters, or Friday, this Friday morning, I'll be there from 8 to 10. If those times don't work for you, please get in touch with me, and we'll set up another time. But I try to be as available as possible, and I would look forward to going into this and explain to you why I think the way I do, and I'd be happy to hear what you think, too. So, that's all.
All right. Other questions or comments on Article 20? Don't see any hands. All right, folks, I think in that case, we're going to have completed going through all the articles that Representative Town Meeting will consider on March 23rd of 2024. I'm impressed how many people held out to the end of this meeting. Usually, there are a lot less of you here. So, yeah, things to keep in mind, watch your emails for any updates from RTM, from us about RTM, and for that information that was asked for. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. What time does this start?
8:30.
Starts at 8:30. At the high school.
In Bradwell.
In Bradwell.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you very much to BCTV. Thank you very much to our interpreters.